The time is 6:00 PM. I will call to order the February 25th meeting of the Huxley City Council. Roll call, please.
Murphy?
Here.
Mulder?
Here.
Rigler?
Here.
Etcher?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll give you a motion, Mulder. Second.
Rigler.
Second by Mr. Rigler. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please respond with a "I."
I.
I.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now is the time in the agenda for public comment. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on any items this evening? Seeing no unrise, we will move along. Item four on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. And it's a hearing and approval of an amendment to the Huxley Urban Renewal Plan. It's Resolution 25011. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion, motion by Etcher?
Second. Mulder?
Second by Mr. Mulder. Dave?
This would just be time for the public. If they had any questions in the public hearing, I will note that we did. We sent out the notice that was required for the plan amendment to both the school district and the county. We'd had a meeting scheduled two weeks ago today on the 11th. Nobody showed up. And I don't believe we've received any written comments regarding the plan amendment as well.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item during the public hearing? Seeing no unrise. Any further comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Oh, wait, we need a motion to close, and then you'll need a motion to actually do the resolution.
Yep. Need a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Etcher. Second by Mr. Rigler. Roll call, please. Don't roll call on that item. Okay. Okay. All those in favor, please respond with a "I."
I.
All those opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed. Now we need a motion to approve the Resolution 25011 regarding the Urban Renewal Plan Amendment.
A motion.
Motion by Roberts?
Second.
Second by Etcher. Any comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Up next is the consent agenda. Are there any items that council wishes to poll? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second, Mulder.
Motion by Etcher, second by Mulder. Comments? Roll call, please.
Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Item 6A this evening is the review of the proposed financing payment structure of the public works facility. Mr. Schultz?
Okay, thank you. There are instructions there, so that helps. That's awesome. So the bound handout is the same material that was in your packets as electronic copies. It includes initial financing scenarios for the public works facility. There are two general obligation scenarios and two urban renewal TIF revenue scenarios. I might just hit a couple highlights from page two of 29 immediately behind the cover page. This, this provides, this page provides a summary of the two general obligation scenarios. The great part about the going forward with the general obligation bond for the public works facility. It includes two payment structures, two payment sources for the proposed financing. You have your stable, steady, $3.58 debt service levy. That's the same that it is for the current fiscal year. And after the debt is included, there's no levy increase for the public works facility. Basically, we're layering in the new debt to be paid off on both of these over a five-year term with the June 1 of 2030 final maturity date. Layering in new debt as existing debt previously issued falls off. And you end up with no levy increase, a stable city tax levy going forward. The kind of the distinction becomes between how, how long does the city want to keep your levy at $3.58? Taking into account any other potential future city projects that you might undertake. So that's one question to consider. And then also, what, how much does the city wish to use for urban renewal TIF revenues to pay toward general obligation debt over time? All the TIF scenarios assume a lower TIF payment toward general obligation debt than what you currently have. So you've historically had TIF paid debt per year, sometimes over $2 million per year. It's been at a million nine more recently. It's been at a million nine and as noted in bullet point three under general obligation scenario A. It was at a million nine in fiscal year 2324. The plan for fiscal year 2627 is to have it at a million five. So it remains at that level, no higher, and then just declines in every year going forward. The general obligation bonds in the current bond market, you're looking at a rate just above 3%. And there's detail in the supporting pages that follow. The first, the two scenarios really differ on how long the levy remains at $3.58 and how much TIF is used and what amount for how long. So those, that's a, if, if everything works out with the public hearing for the financing at the, at the early March meeting. I simply would encourage the council to consider the general obligation scenario. It's got a lower interest cost and it has dual payment sources from your debt levy and TIF revenues. The following page, page three of 29 reviews two scenarios for TIF revenue bonds. These are only payable from one single payment source, the Huxley Urban Renewal Area TIF revenues. These payment structures reflect shorter debt terms. And given that they are payable from one source, your annual TIF certification is a bit higher with each of these two scenarios. As noted under bullet, bullet point two under scenario C. Your annual TIF certification, including payments toward general obligation debt and TIF debt is, remains at about $2,050,000 through fiscal year 2829. So that's higher than what you had have for fiscal year 2324 at a million nine. So that's a six-year payment structure for scenario C. Estimated rate on that payment structure is in the range of roughly 3.4%. And then scenario D is a five-year payment structure. That, just with the existing TIF paid general obligation debt that you have, that reflects debt service paid from TIF at about $2,380,000 through fiscal year 29, just over $2 million in fiscal year 30, and then drops down to $645,000 thereafter. And that simply relates to the water plant project. I'll hit a couple, just very briefly hit a couple highlights, if you don't mind, behind tab one. And then to page five of 29. This is a multi-year view of the, of the city's debt service planning, debt levy planning model that we developed at Northland. So what's in column G is, is the city's debt service levy. There are two historic years in the darker gray shading at the, at the top of that column. City's debt levies have been at 358 per thousand for last year fiscal year 2324 and the current year fiscal year 2425. There are, in the blue shading immediately below, there are two years where it's in the future, where it's assumed to be at 358 per thousand. And that drops down to 330 below that, $290 and $2.36 after that. What, so what ties, what ties in here is, might the city have a future project perhaps in early 2027 hypothetically, that you might, or you'll have room to issue debt to keep that levy that's currently shown at $3.30 if you wanted to keep it at 350 and have a stable overall city levy? The other question to, that we can, you know, maneuver on how much TIF paid debt you'd like to have, that's shown in column I. You can see it's, what's at it, just about a million nine for fiscal year 2324, current fiscal year. It's about a million 534, and then it's no higher than a million five in any future fiscal year. And in fact, drops below that, $2,400,000, $2,300,000, $2,200,000. It just gradually drops down going forward. This includes the public works debt in column H. All total debt services in column Q. And I guess this also assumes, I should point out, a future taxable valuation growth rate of 4%. As noted at the, at the top of column D. That's pretty conservative considering the table at the bottom center of the page shows the historic city valuation growth rate's been about 8% over the last, last 11 years or so. So this is scenario A. Behind tab two, I'll just hit one, one page on this. This is scenario B on, on page 12 of 29. Reflects, again, a general obligation scenario, dual payment sources from your debt service levy and from TIF revenues. Reflects a future levy at $3.58 per thousand for next fiscal year, fiscal year 26. Same for fiscal year 27, and then drops down below $3 in the green shaded area under column G in the future years. This is an attempt really to keep the TIF certification more in gradual steps down. Takes it at a million five and as noted in column I, for the next two fiscal years through June 30, 2027. And then the blue shading reflects million three in TIF contributions toward general obligation debt thereafter. So stable debt levy, stable or lower TIF certifications are reflected in each, each of the two scenarios. Tab three is the, the first scenario C, the TIF revenue bonds. Page 19 of 29, on exhibit five. This simply reviews, in the first column, the, that's existing TIF payments that are planned toward general obligation debt. The proposed 2025, if you went the TIF revenue route, that, that's layered in in the second column with the green shading. And then the total TIF paid debt consisting of the, of the general obligation debt in the first column, the TIF revenue bonds for the public work facility in the green shading, the total is shown in the, the column to the right. The annual TIF paid debts are just over $2 million, as you, as you can see going forward. And it's a little bit more elevated, but I think it's still a manageable level considering what the city's had historically for TIF paid debt. Behind the fourth tab, this is a shorter payment structure, a five-year payment structure for the public works facility, has a June 1 of 2030 final payment. Simply reflects in the column to the right, the annual debt service peaks at at about $2,380,000, right in that range. And it then drops below that amount for fiscal year 2930. And is in the $640,000 range in the, the last three years, again relating to the water, water plant. So any highlights you wanted to maybe hit David or Barb?
I would just note that, you know, in, in reviewing this last week after you said it, you know, I'm glad you were able to put a couple scenarios together for both. You know, hopefully, we'll be able to go the GO route, and I really like the scenario one, which gets that debt service levy down to 236, you know? 290 to 236, it gets us quicker, like you said, that we could start planning another project a little bit sooner and still be able to keep that debt service levy where we need to keep it, so.
You bet.
I do appreciate that, and I know that Chip had, he had originally sent a proposal, I think it was a little bit longer on the TIF. And I said, no, we gotta keep it at that five. He had like a six and an eight, and I said, no, I really want to see five to six. So he got that put together and I think all four of them are very doable. Hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to go the GEO bound, the GEO bond route as it has less interest. And, and we can use two funding sources to make sure that we get that paid off quickly.
You bet. These are all contingent on what your project cost is. They assume $5,150,000 for the project cost. I think we're just trying to get the city in a position where you have authority to proceed with whatever financing route you choose to go forward with. And then can go ahead with that financing once you get construction bids, thinking that roughly the July timeframe of this year, so.
And hopefully those bids will come in cheaper than that, and we won't be financing near as much, so.
You bet. Exactly. Any questions that you folks might have or any tweaks or kind of tailoring that you'd like to see on any of these?
With that being said, we hope it comes in cheaper. Is there a cap that we have? Is there, like, we don't, I mean, this?
Well, it's, I mean, you basically, your cap is going to be the, you know, if you go the GEO route, it's not going to be able to go over the 5.1.
$5,150,000 is the.
You know, the, the estimate, you know, that was put together when the, in the initial proposal was around four or six, but I know you said you've seen some pretty good bids. So, you know, the hope would be, you know, the original proposal was probably a little bit less than what Chip was working with. So I think that's one thing in our favor, but hopefully, you know, if we can get this out and get a bid at the, you know, the appropriate time, that we'll get good bids and we'll see that coming even cheaper than that, so.
If it comes in, say, 300,000 or 3 million instead of 5 million, you know, we'll be looking at a three-year scenario instead of a five-year scenario, or, or should we?
I would tend to want to keep the payments is
About the same.
As same as we can.
Yeah, we could do it three years.
Pay the debt quicker versus stretching out.
Absolutely.
I agree. Yeah, just what would that look like? That's all good.
That, that would work perfectly fine. You know, if you don't, if you go to page eight of 29, that's scenario A for the general obligation approach. And if you just isolate the, in the principal column, the last two years in 2029 and 2030. You know, there's 945,000 in principal in 2029, 895, just round that to 900,000 in 2030. So if you shave those two off, that's a million eight less in round numbers, so that's kind of your benchmark you can look at. And if you, just how interest is calculated, the one years, the annual interest payments associated with that final principal payment of 895,000. That's 17,900 twice a year, or that's what, 35,600? So each of those prior years, you'd save in round numbers, you know, 30 some thousand in interest, so.
So the only thing I want to add on this is, let's focus 20 years down the road. Because this thing's lasted 35 years plus now. So let's, let's focus on what we're going to need in the next 20 years. So before we start cutting things out. Yeah.
Do you think it's not big enough now? You just want to make sure that?
We just want to make sure that it's going to last us the next 20, 25 years.
Just comparing it to that Grand County facility that looked like it was similar size and what that budget came in on that one recently.
So, so hopefully they plan down the road too, so, but let's just make sure we're planning ahead down the road.
So that's.
I want to show how much I don't know of all this, right? But between the A and the B, the numbers are the same, right? Except for we go to the debt levy a little.
They're, they're pretty, pretty close.
Yeah. Is it just the interest that we're getting in on the, the way we're structuring or what's?
Kind of the key difference is how long the debt levy remains at $3.58 and how, how much TIF has contributed. And, and that contribution from TIF, if you look at what's contributed toward the public works building and existing debt. If you want to free something up and it's a policy decision for the council, do you want to have room freed up in two years, three years? Yeah, for a future project, so. That's really the only, only difference, really. Interest cost isn't materially different between the two.
Well, I mean, I, I think it'll come down, you know, we, it really will come down to see whether we're, we're able to do the GEO bond. So when we get the bid, I think you'll be able to walk through it and Chip can, you know, probably, once he gets a good number, then he can tell you what, you know, the two things would be, and, and it's really council's decision. Because if it comes in lower, that, that will change a little bit, but not a lot, but.
Okay. You bet.
Very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving on this evening, 6B, I need a motion to untable Resolution 25010.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Roberts.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mulder. This motion was tabled two weeks ago. Any further comments or discussion on it? Hearing, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
All right, moving along. 6C this evening, I need a motion to approve as a Resolution 25010, approving the project service agreement for the public works project.
Give me a motion.
Motion by Mr. Mulder.
Give me a second.
Second by Ms. Roberts. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
All right, item 6D this evening, and a, need a motion to approve Resolution 25015. That's a resolution to fix a date of a meeting in which, at which time it's proposed to take action, action on the issuance of a urban renewal tax increment revenue bond in the amount not to, not to exceed $5.425 million. Need a motion on this?
Provided motion.
Motion by Mr. Rigler?
I'll give you a second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. Chip?
Well, the, I just want to, should point out, the amount for the TIF revenue bonds is higher than the general obligation bond because it assumes provision for a reserve fund. That was noted on the, the summary pages for the TIF revenue bonds. It's equal to 5% of the principal amount, so that's why it's, it's different. And happy to answer any questions beyond that.
And I would just note that we're looking for the public hearing to take place, I believe, on March 11 at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
All right, item 6E this evening, and a motion on Resolution 25016, setting a date for a public hearing for a GEO urban renewal loan agreement into borrow money thereunder.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Etcher?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rigler. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Very much. 6F this evening, I need a motion to approve ordinance 540. It amends the Huxley City Parking Regulations. This is the second reading.
Mulder?
Second, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Mulder.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Roberts. This is the second reading. Any comments? If not, we'll see it again next, in two weeks for the third reading. Roll call, please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Thank you. 6G this evening, need a motion to approve ordinance 541, amending the city code of Huxley regarding no parking zones. This is also the second of third, second of three readings.
Motion.
Motion by Roberts, second. Second by Mr. Mulder. Comments? Pretty straightforward. Roll call.
Murphy?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Item 6H this evening is discussion and follow-up regarding proposals for a makeup air unit for the wastewater treatment facility. Sir?
Yeah, so I guess to sum it up, our, it's called a makeup air unit, basically pumps in the air, heats it as it comes in there. It's just something to keep clean air in there all the time. It's an explosion-proof building, all that good stuff. There's two separate heating coils, like days like today, works just fine. But when it gets real cold, like it was last week, and that second coil is not working properly. Basically, there's something that's burned up in it. And the Hastings unit that we have now, apparently, we just can't get parts for it. So we have to have a whole new coil put in it, which was in the sum of about $42,000. So priced a new Hastings unit, and I think that was upwards of like $69,000. So what we've kind of been looking at is, there's talk of hopefully getting gas out to the, the new public works facility as well as the water and wastewater plant. The water plant's all pretty much LP, but we've got some, a few things that are LP, but we'd like to start switching things over to LP when we can. Because I go from, so we've got two separate meters. Summertime, we use like one to two kilowatt of power for heating and cooling. Wintertime, it can be anywhere from eight to 16 kilowatt, depending on how the day is. So we're looking at possibly going electric, possibly going gas, which would be LP for the time being. And then eventually we'd retrofit that to natural gas. So I guess what we're kind of looking for is, we don't know 100% the route we want to go, so we're kind of looking to make sure. So we're kind of looking to make sure that, you know, the highest bid that we have right now, I think, was in the sum of about thirty two thousand. Um, if we go with the LP route, there's some things that we need to line up. We've already done some homework. Um, Heartland's who we currently have for LP out there now. Um, so we're looking at a tank rental as well as some other things to get this put in. Um, tank rentals about a hundred and twenty dollars a year, plus that initial fill cost. And then also install, the numbers we got were anywhere from. I think it was three hundred for parts and then one to two hours for labor. We figured about a hundred and fifty dollars for that, so per hour. So, um, ideally, the unit that we're looking towards going with is going to be, uh, probably with Cruck, um, plumbing and heating. If we go the LP route, it'll be in the ballpark of twenty thousand five hundred. There's some extra labor costs that we haven't. Committed to yet, so that's where we're looking to just get that, you know, that lump sum approval to not exceed that thirty two thousand. And I think that that's going to be sufficient for, I I mean, ideally, the number I'm kind of looking at. It looks like about twenty five ish. Ish, so that's kind of where we're at. And it's like, uh, it's it's not a. You know. Would like to get it in, it's we gotta have it. I've been burning a kerosene heater in there last week just to keep pipes from freezing. Which an explosion proof building, not ideal, so. But it's better than having to fix a bunch of broken pipes and manifolds and all sorts of good stuff. So I guess that's the background on it. If there's any questions, I guess.
Okay, um, you've selected the uh, materials and vendor then that you're recommending?
Yeah, correct, plumbing and heating. Like I said, we're just not a hundred percent sure. We'd we'd like to. Do a little bit more homework to make sure that the LP is the perfect route before, obviously, the electric worked for. Well. Thirteen plus years, so. I mean, electric, everything's there. There's some modifications that we have to go, um, like. Instead of going with the Hastings unit of that number, plus trying to repair the unit was forty two thousand, even if we go the electric route. I think, uh, it was about twenty four thousand plus about thirty five hundred in electrical work. So even then, we're still like less than thirty thousand dollars, so it makes a hundred percent sense to completely get rid of that unit. Not to mention Hastings was a a twenty. Uh, it's like a twenty weekly time or something like that. So, I mean, it was considerable, it was almost like six months to get. Even the parts, if we wanted to order the parts of forty two thousand dollars for a coil, which is just. That was my mind. I don't understand that, how you don't have, it's not very complicated.
Sure. But. Okay, um, so tonight, we're just looking for a general consensus to move forward with selecting a bid, or what are we doing tonight, Dave?
Um, you've, we've drafted this as a discussion appropriate follow up, so if you are. Implying to approve them moving forward with the project, uh, just a motion. To allow them to proceed with the not to exceed the thirty two thousand would be sufficient for this evening. Unless there's other information that you'd like.
So the electric is always prone to electric going out. We're not even looking at that.
Well, I mean, we've got electric generator or standby generators, so, I mean. Theoretically, we'd never have an issue with either in all reality, other than LP running out, which we're on automatic refill for that.
And we've taken bids on the propane installation and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, we just got like an estimate of what we'd be looking at. So like I said, Heartland's who we're currently contracted with for another tank. So we put an LP heater in at in our storage building, because. We're running out of space to put things and there's more and more things that are carrying things that we need to have heated, so.
So are we gonna need bids from installation from other companies?
That'll be all done through Cruck, other than the the LP tank, if we went with that route. But otherwise, like I said, Cruck will be putting in all of this.
And I and I would just note that, you know, Jeff has been working with Forest, they've taken all the buildings, looked at the BTUs that they've been. On, and like I said, they're 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 doing the analysis that, uh, client has gas on the. Be the west side of Cambridge, and we're looking at the the potential of having a lab bring gas over, so eventually we could get all of these buildings. On natural gas, because when you look at some of the electric bills that they've got. The natural gas is going to be quite a bit cheaper in the long run as we move forward. So I think that's the reason they're looking at the at the LP now, and at some point. Uh, I I think Jeff's intent is to get it moved to a. Natural gas, if it, you know, cost out, okay.
You gotta come up, sorry.
That that new funds works facility, that's what we're trying to do is to see what that looks like, with the line, what that cost would be, get that a quote over here to see what that looks like, so. They're at the Cambridge School now, and he says, yeah, we can look at that, might be relatively. You know, decent to put it in, and we just have it on site, and then that way we'll do the public work, the public works facility, we wouldn't have to worry about doing that that time, so.
So what what are we looking at at time?
Uh, I think I think they could probably turn around pretty quick for the city, the way they.
We're looking at that next year or two?
Oh, yeah, I think they probably did this summer if we wanted to move forward with it, so. But yeah, once I get those costs in and see what that looks like, we can, uh, we'll bring that back and discuss it with you guys, so.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase and installation not to exceed thirty two thousand?
Give you a motion.
Motion by Ms. Roberts?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Mulder. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Roberts? Yes. Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Balder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, moving along, uh, department, council and mayor reports, uh, there were department reports, of course, included in the packet this week. Uh, are there any additional items from staff? Here, seeing no one rise, poorest. Aaron? Thank you, ma'am, Barb?
I did just want to point out that with the um, proposed. Or the levy, the hearing for the proposed tax levy, there's no change in the overall city levy. Uh, the however, the forms that the state supplied assumed a ten percent. Increase on a hundred thousand dollar valued property, taxable value property. Along with a three hundred thousand dollar commercial property, so it's a little misleading, it looks like. Taxes for the city are going up twelve to thirteen percent. The actual increase, uh, we did not see those increases, so. The actual increase um, in taxes for the city, just because of the rollback commercial. On a three hundred thousand dollar commercial building, it'll increase point eight percent. And on a hundred thousand dollar residential property will increase two point three nine percent. That's entirely because of the rollback.
Okay, thank you very much, Barb. David?
Would just note, uh, at your spots this evening, I put out the Discover Ames magazine, as you recall, that is the one where we advertised. Uh, this year, uh, there are twenty seven thousand copies of that that are printed every incoming freshman, all of the. Hotels in Ames, all of the travel centers around the state receive this. It does have our full page ad that recognize our businesses and have the QR code to show them all of the businesses, and I think the ad turned out really nice, so. They brought us a box of ninety and said if we needed more, we could get more, so we're going to put them up in the library and just have them out here where folks can grab them as well, so. And um, for your discussion later on with the discussion on the granular pavement, we were we were able to find. It's kind of in the middle, I got right to it, sorry, um, we. Forrest and Jeff provided me with the resolution twenty one oh forty, uh, that goes back to when the um. City decided only put rock under the arterial streets, so. It was based on the SUDAS design, so you've got that information with you tonight, as well as the in- information that was previously sent out in your packet for, uh. The discussion on the second work session item tonight.
Nothing tonight, thank you. I was, uh, just looking at the discussions on parking and the street signs and and things like that on the agenda. Took the opportunity to drive through the new subdivision on the south end of town. Um, and are those roads open yet? And the reason I wonder about is, you know, there didn't seem to be any traffic control, there was no end of road signs. Um, at where it ran into the the cornfields or the end of that stuff, I didn't know if those were officially open. Or not, and maybe we should kind of put some. Put some devices up just to protect our interest if there's nothing.
Also with that, with no barricades or anything, uh, it's been voted to the developer to make sure that those roads make loads.
You, yeah, I just want to make sure our citizens, if they're driving through the. Area are safe, they recognize that the pavement ends and 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 stops at some point and doesn't don't. Have crashes, so just pay attention to that or see if you can do something about that. Thanks. That's all I got.
Yeah, mine's a brief one. I had to look up the, here we go. Uh, Kevin Cole from the Huxley Tree Board is being recognized by the Iowa Urban Tree Council. So figured I'd give a shout out to him and also to Heather for coordinating the tree board, but for the grant writing he did and the. We actually ended up not doing them as right away tree proposal, but um, they were able to go in the. The park on the northwest side of town, so they still recognize the fact that he wrote the grant and got that done, so.
Great.
Yeah. Good win.
So with budget coming up, uh, chief from the fire department. Um, in the meeting we had with you guys, I asked for a kind of a study or research on the. Different cities that had ambulances our size and so forth. I don't know if we've seen anything on that or not, but we do need that. That's Roberts.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
No additional comments from me either. Uh, that will conclude our regular business this evening. We do have a work session planned with two items. And we will move, uh, we'll move immediately into the work session. Item eight A this evening is a presentation on a lean comp plan.
How do you turn this thing on? Done? Cool, okay.
We got it.
Okay. Awesome. All right, well, our names are out there, but I am Chris, this is Sean.
Sean.
I think Barb and David? Great. We're at the League of Cities Conference where we did a. Sorry, yeah, in Sioux City, uh, a longer version of the same thing. We are not going to take the whole hour, uh, this evening, but we are.
Even more for questions for you guys at the end, we'll do a condensed version, just kind of give you an idea of what it's about and then be here for questions.
So, um, if you click ahead, yeah, we did introductions, we can go through that. Oh, nice. Um, so. How many of you have been involved in a comp plan? When was it last updated? It's been a while. Okay. Oh, the last adopted one, and that's the one we looked at. Okay, anybody involved in that process back in twenty thirteen? Excellent, excellent. Um, what's your favorite part of that plan? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
At the time we.
Sorry, uh, at the time we created that plan, we were forward looking, uh, but but not far enough. Um, you know, our our future land use plan has, um, it's out of date, uh, very out of date. Um, so at the time, I thought we were doing a great job with that, but uh, has not been updated, so.
True, so it's it it just needs to be revamped, and so I think that's why, that's what. In the League of Cities, that's what caught Greg and Barb's attention, was we were talking about lean comp plans, which is just. We have found, um, across kind of MSA's footprint, which goes into Minnesota, Illinois, Wisconsin. Uh, and Iowa, and then we work kind of elsewhere here and there, that. Um, there's a lot of information in using more graphics and less of the uh, traditional comp plan methods, which if you open up that twenty thirteen plan. Or maybe even the twenty nineteen one that, um, didn't quite get adopted or didn't go through the process. There's a lot of text, there's some, there's some graphs, and then three pages of text, and then three pages of text with goals, and three pages of text to describe. Your community facilities and three pages of text to do everything, um, as it goes through. Um, and they sit on a shelf. If you go to the next slide there. Just not user friendly. Um, and and there's there, one of the issues is that in general, like, we have a lot more thrown at us. Uh, than we did even in twenty thirteen, uh, just in terms of what screens we're looking at every day and all the information that people are getting and all the. Information that we have access to, uh, and all of those types of things. So people are. Um, again, five times as much as nineteen ninety six, we're we're seeing that much more information in a day. Um, so we have to find a way to kind of clean out some of that noise, uh, especially in. Documents like comp plans where people, if you're picking it up. Ten years from when it was adopted, chances are you're probably looking at a future land use map, which has likely been updated as you've gone. Through those iterations and it has have you annexed new property and figured out what's going to be in the future and that sort of thing. Um, and maybe your goals, you know, maybe you review the goals if you've got a a situation in front of you where you're like. Man, we don't really have a good framework on how to review this, so let's look at the comp plan and see if it aligns with the community's goals. Um, those are two of the bigger ones, and then sometimes an implementation plan, if there was one in that comp plan that had. Goals, maybe some action steps, some strategies, that kind of thing that you're looking at as you get a new. You know, some type of new development that, again, something that doesn't quite fit in the box of like, yeah, it's own commercial, they want to do a commercial building, we look at the site plan, we go through it. It, you know, it has a stormwater retention it needs, it it can get the, uh, it can be sprinkled, and yeah, we got sewer access, great, fine. Make sure they can, you know, make sure the site plan works, it's got enough parking, and we can get in and out, and off we go. When it doesn't fit into that box and it's a little different, then sometimes you look at the comp plan, so some of, those are the bigger things, but. Go ahead and go to the next slide. In general, the number one way to make sure your plan collects dust is to fill it with information and dense text that, again. Those pieces are the ones that people are usually looking for for those comp plans, and especially as you go through the process. When we're updating plans, if I tell somebody to look, review a lean comp plan, and I'll show a couple of examples of this. Um, an advisory committee, a steering committee, planning commission, the council, you know, whoever. They do not want to read through a hundred and twenty chapters of text, and they're likely not going to. Uh, they look at the map and they kind of make their decisions, and you know, sometimes you'll have a. A librarian on the advisory committee who really goes through everything, but for the most part, people don't look at all of that stuff, so, uh, we've gotten into a habit of. Really trying to use more more graphics, more maps, less text to kind of describe these sort of things, and figured out vehicles in which to deliver that. Uh, to the general public as well as appointed and elected officials and staff so that it makes sense, and. It can last a little bit longer and be in front of people and doesn't sit on a shelf and, uh, pick up dust. So, next slide. Everybody's always heard, one look is worth a thousand words, right? One picture can be worth a thousand words. Um, this is from nineteen thirteen, and it's still words, but it was different from the other text at that time. Go ahead to the next one. Um, and of course, another quote, you know, one one picture can really, really put a lot in there, and so. Yeah, that's a painting, doesn't directly relate to comprehensive planning, but. When we talk about a map or something like that, that can have the same effect with a little bit of descriptive text and how. Uh, and how it more accessible it can be if we put the thing online as part of the process and part of the end result, it it can really kind of. Pop and make it more useful. Go ahead to the next one. Um, just another little example of one icon that says watch for falling rocks, and if you had to say the same thing. That that icon says to all of us when we see it, as we're driving, you know, through Colorado or something like that. And looking at those giant fences that they built to hold back, uh, the cliffs on seventy, that one little sign. You'd get hit by the rocks if it was falling and you had to read that whole, uh, text paragraph there or drive off the road, one of the two. Go ahead. And then again, just, um, in general, people lose, uh, lose interest after eight seconds of concentration, so we got, we don't have a lot of time to grab somebody's attention. So we need to use, uh, we started to obviously look to use more graphics. Sixty five percent of the US is visual learners and are engaged in that way. Um, and then again, of course, we, you can increase by making something more interesting visually, you capture more people. You capture more people's interests that are not digging into the text and are really, and in a comp planning process and many public. Processes like this, we want to grab people's attention because most of the time we're looking for that input. Especially you folks as elected officials, you want feedback, right? Like you want to make good decisions. You're representing constituents, um, and, and voters. And, and you want to say, yeah, let's, let's get as much feedback as we can. And we try to approach this in a different way so that we can get as much of that as po- as possible. Go ahead. So what does it mean for comp planning? Make it engaging, lose some of the noise. Uh, the big question is, um, and we were, we actually had a session where. Gary Taylor from Iowa State and a bunch of students came down, uh, last fall. Was that last fall they came down?
Hmm, two.
Two, okay. And we were talking about, um, just lean complants and what to get rid of. And there are some, there are some concerns from. Uh, the academic part of comp planning that says, well, you have to have all of this stuff in there. Um, and if you go to the next slide, Barb, um, the information we'd keep. So then go down one more. Um, so comprehensive planning in Iowa, again, not as most of you are well aware, not an ordinance, right? Not a legally binding anything other than your zoning decisions really should be based on a future land use plan. And a review of that. Um, that's kind of the, that's the, that was the trigger way back in the seventies when they first started doing it. In 2010 about they started talking about smart planning principles, but they still didn't put a lot of teeth in there. They said you should. Consider these, you shall consider these smart planning principles, but in the end. You're really looking at a future land use map and some implementation that says that has recommendations and actions to meet your projected needs. So we can go through this whole process, but here's what we're really tied to. The stuff that we really have to keep. Isn't all of that background information and all of that noise that yes, you want to look at it as you're building a plan, but you don't need to have it in the final document. And it certainly doesn't need to last for 10 years because in the data sense of it, a lot of it is out of date. Within two years, five years, whatever it is, especially for somebody who's growing as fast as you are. You know, like you said, your, your plan was probably out of date in 2019 to a certain degree when you were thinking about updating it. So. Um, we got to keep the things that are important and go beyond that. Go ahead, Barb. Thank you. So we take a measured approach, determine a course, we talk about community goals. That's still a big part of it because it builds off the plan, wants and needs. We start with a smaller set of data, uh, smaller set of standard data. And then dive deeper to understand the nuances of the community and what you really need to dig into and what's important for the next five, 10. Uh, usually we, we would say 10 years. I think back in the day, you know, uh. Uh, there's a lot of definitions of a complaint. It says 20 years. It's unrealistic for somebody that's growing like you are. To think that anything you do today in this room is going to be absolutely, you know, ironclad in 10 years. It won't. Everything will change to a certain degree. So scale the plan to the community. And so we have this document example, this is Norwalk's plan, um, just looking at. There's a lot of, there is a ton, there is 20 pages of data on. Those two pages right there that we were able to squeeze in and say, hey, here's an, here's an attractive way to look at this. And again, that was done. 2020, it's probably out of date now. It is, it, because it was, you know, it was pre whatever we dealt with in, uh, COVID plus pre. Six, seven years of growth. And as you, as you guys are growing, you know, Norwalk and other communities are as well. So go on to the next one. Um, so here's an example, Greenfield. This is one we're working on right now. Um, it's an online plan. They won't have a document. In the end, they will have a basically a story map, uh, that documents we're just building as we go through the process. And that will be basically what they get at the end and they can continue to update the implementation piece of it. As an Excel sheet, as an Excel sheet on an annual basis. When they do their, you're talking, you know, you're finalizing your budget, right? In October, November, December, when you start talking to your departments about their budgets and that kind of thing, they can go through that implementation plan and say. We did this, we did this, let's find two more actions. We don't have to make it some giant 30 page where it's, it's, here's the strategy. Find us two actions that we're going to do this year. At the end of the year, review whether you did them or not, and then either find new ones. Or reassess whether you need to go after the same one that you did again, but we make it real simple in that sense. So. A couple more slides here, tons, tons of examples. So show me the plans. And again, I sent. Barb a link to the online ones, I believe, and maybe she sent that on. If not. Yeah, there's, there's a ton on, and as you say, we can certainly send those links, but, um, this is Norwalk's. Go ahead, Barb. We can kind of scroll through these a little bit. Oh, go back one. So, uh, one of the big tools, uh, that zoning compatibility matrix is a big one that basically looks at your future land use designations. And your zoning districts and quite clearly says to anybody who picks this up, here are the things that are permitted. In this future land use class by the, or the zoning district and how that aligns to the future land use class and, and what isn't. Um, we talked about the process. Go ahead, Barb. Thank you. Um, but there was a lot of planning efforts that they had done in the recent past that we built into the comp plan. So they could also. Kind of lose some of, not necessarily lose those plans, but that they wouldn't be lost. They, you know, they kind of pick them up off the shelf. Take the things that were interesting from them, put them into the comp plan and move forward.
And you should do the same for your next planning process. If you have anything that's still relevant that you can bring over to this planning process. Um, you should do it because you don't want to have anything lost or redundancies. You're kind of just putting bad money up.
So, and this is an example of that implementation. Um, in the end, uh, what Luke Paris and Norwalk got was, uh, he went to all the. Departments, engineering, you know, public works, parks, economic development, all of those folks and had them weigh in on that implementation plan. It has a goal, it has four strategies and then action steps that get updated annually. Um, and that's basically, I don't know if you guys know Luke, uh, Nelson down there. You guys probably do. Luke uses a CIP program that I know this and that work very well together and he just kind of rolls with it as he starts that process. Every fall to update that CIP, um, and work with this comp plan as well. Cause some of the stuff's ongoing, right? You don't have to budget for it. It's just as stuff comes in, we're going to review this and we're going to look at this part of the comp plan and then stuff, some stuff takes a budget. And it needs to be, yeah, we got to think about that five years from now, next year, whatever it is. Okay. Go ahead, Barb. Thank you. Um, just a different example of a, a parks plan. You can kind of scroll sort of through this one if you would, Barb. Just again, a lot of stuff in there that's all kind of in a couple pages. Um, of improvements, has some pictures, makes it interesting. Somebody, it kind of reads, you know, a little bit more like a magazine instead of a, uh. Preliminary engineering report or something like that. Prairie City, um, again, that's another one where it is a online plan. We basically put a bunch of charts together that show like there's their population. There's, those maps are embedded. So if you were, as we push that out to the public, they click on that map and they can zoom in to their house. They can turn on an aerial. They can turn on and off layers. Um, same thing with like their mobility maps and all that kind of stuff. And then Greenfield, again, there's a kind of a link in that. Um, that might be the end of this. Is that it? Oh, no, I would say. Yep. But again, um, real simple, took the important stuff that that land use map, their future land use map is interactive. So somebody, you know, you know, they don't have to look at. A PDF necessarily. They can go online on their phone and kind of zoom into what they want. We had a crowdsourced map where they could provide their own input. Um, and again, it's all public facing. It'll all be part of the end document and it gets delivered in that context. So. We get to focus less on pages and pages and pages of text and more on. Uh, engagement and kind of making something that hopefully will be interesting for somebody to read and can be updated. Uh, continually for the next five, 10 years. That's it. That's the end. Sorry. What kind of, yeah, we're happy to answer any questions you guys have.
I thought the layout was really nice. I think that's what happened to us is ours became so overwhelming. It was so big and then you just lose what is you're trying to say. And then. The 2019, is that the one Iowa State helped us with? Okay. So we didn't adopt it. Um, I don't know. We just could never agree.
Yep.
Comp plans are hard. It, it's a hard process because it's dealing with everything in the community, dealing with housing.
I like how you got it broke out to parks and everything in there and then planning and zoning. That's our biggest gripe with us is the land use. So.
Yep.
Sean, you may have addressed this when you came up and visited with Barbara and I earlier, but.
Yeah.
You know, we talked, it was very important to get our public, you know, in, involved in this. Remind me of how many types of, uh, engagement opportunities we have with our general public as well as our P and Z board, council and, and staff.
Yeah. Do you want to speak?
Yeah. So I, in a normal process, I would say what we would, if you said like, hey. Run us through an engagement strategy that you would pick for us, right? That you think would work. Um, we would do, we have to have some traditional meetings. So you got your six thirty, you know, Tuesday night, um, come and. Come to city hall and we'll talk about future land use or we'll talk about needs and opportunities. And then you have another draft open house at the end where you say. Here's the draft plan, throw your darts, right? And you know, the consultants there, staffs there, we've all through, go through that. Then there's all the online engagement stuff, which is. A crowdsourced map where folks that, maybe they come to that meeting and they want to provide more data, but they didn't want to speak out loud. And maybe they weren't able to make it to the meeting because they got. Some, you know, practice going on on Tuesday night, but they can still provide, here's where I think we should see residential growth. Here's where I think that we should see, you know. Trail extensions, whatever it is, they can market on that map as well as an online survey, which we can print off copy. So you kind of get this sort of. At that beginning stage, you have in-person meetings, you have online engagement. It all sort of leads towards the same. Development of the goals and kind of the vision and your strategies and that sort of thing. Towards the middle, it is a little more like advisory committee or plan commission heavy, depending on what you want to do. We try not to meet every month because. People get bored. They, they, you know, you end up, they end up dropping off by the end of, uh, even in kind of a short eight month process, you know, they, they. So we meet every other month and we'll go through a bunch of content, uh, you know, hour and a half or so. Um, with those folks and that's our, that's the steering committee, right? That's the, that's the, hey, we heard this from the general public and people are like, yeah, but. Here's, you know, sort of the situation. You bounce that with some staff. Um, open house at the, at the end. The other thing that we normally do is we work in at least one or two pop-up meetings. So we go to a festival. Somewhere in the process, depending on what we're doing, and we just set up a booth and as people are doing their thing. Not really interested in the comp plan. They just happen to walk across, hey, here's this comp plan we're doing and come give us your feedback on it. Um, we catch a lot of people that are never going to go to the evening meeting and weren't going to do the online stuff anyway at those events. Uh, especially families or even visitors that are coming in for those types of festivals and events. Uh, that's, it's pretty common to do those as well. Um, so that's kind of, that's the gamut.
It's kind of going to the community instead of the community coming to you. Um, we find that as a really great way to interact and we get some really. Good feedback from people that like Chris said, we normally, you know, the traditional meeting type of people are usually not the young families and people that are busy lives. Um, so it's a really great way to interact with the community on something that you already have established that we just plug into.
We did, when we did waiver lease, we did three pop-up meetings, basically one at the beginning, one towards the middle, one we were finalizing the land use and one at the end for the draft. Plan. There were more, that we got more interaction from those than we ever did from the same partner meeting at six thirty to seven thirty on. You know, Thursday night at the, uh, at city hall. But we have to do both because there, there are folks that are going to want that traditional meeting.
So hopefully it doesn't get there, but I know during the 2019 one, we were, we had some suggestions like high density. Seven thousand square foot lots with high density housing and, um, public, public transportation facilities and things. That probably didn't necessarily fit.
Nope.
Kind of what we were hearing. How do we resolve those conflicts if we ever get there? Cause I think that was part of why we never ended up adopting. That 2019.
You're, you're recording, right? Okay. So, um, when you, you, so you said you, you were working with, um, probably one of the studio groups from Iowa State, right? Um, that is, you have a unique skillset that's coming in to do some of that stuff and. A lot of them have maybe not gone through some of the, uh, trials and tribulations of, of, of running, managing, growing. A city, uh, and may not have some of the same perspectives on what's feasible, what's, uh, what's in character. And what is, what really is probably going to be the result of development. That would be the, the best way I could say that. The perspective of is you guys like who you are right now, my guess is, um, and you are growing because something has. Is valuable and other people like that as well. There would be no reason for us to come in and upend the apple cart. And say, you know what? You really, really, really need this. Now, if you told me, we are looking for a place for this, we have a need for it. But we're having a real hard time finding where we can do this and it's not going to cause a bunch of land use conflict because. If you're going to put high density stuff and the best place to put it in is where there isn't anything else yet. Because then you don't have anybody who is going to be like, hey, I don't want that next door because I, I live in a single family home. And it wouldn't be necessarily something I'd say like, hey, drop that next door. I'll be good with that, but it's out on the edge of town, like some of the, you know, what has been built. Then it's a little easier. Um, so you've got to plan ahead for those things. Um, and yeah, the public transportation thing, like you don't have the density. If somebody said that, I would flat out probably in a meeting say, not quite the density. There isn't the density here to support that. Uh, without major, major subsidies and we don't have that, we don't have those resources available.
Yeah, I like it. It wasn't really an interview question, but it was.
We, we, I, I, our intent is to help you develop a plan, not shove. Things down your throat that may not be a good fit for Huxley.
Yeah.
And there's always things, there's alternatives for things. There's ride share programs. There's different things. Like if you've got a part of the population that's not having a needs met. You don't have to implement something that's as big. You can do something that's kind of a microcosm or something that is smaller. That can meet the needs of the people that don't have their needs met currently. And that's what we do with through some of our analysis. And some of the communities that we've worked in where, hey, you guys have a problem. We have a solution that we've seen in another community that maybe worked for you guys and we bring that to the table.
I'd love to see Waymo come to, uh, but anyway, we, we won't go there yet. But, uh, yeah, I've seen a lot of the change. Uh, from standard written out plans with all these texts and data and, and, and same thing with strategic planning. The opportunity to do things in a different way, presented in a different way. I like this. That's why I liked the presentation you guys gave. Uh, back in September and, and, uh, in Sioux City. So I, I think it's good fit for us. I think we'll. Take the input, uh, that we have, the community has and develop a good plan for that. So I'm in favor of, of trying to move forward in this. Way.
Yeah. What's the standard length of time from? Start to finish and putting together something like this.
Twelve months. You probably shoot for 10 and know that sometimes it's hard to get a meeting this specific month. If you're like, hey, we need to do that open house and you start looking at the calendar.
Holidays or whatever.
That's not going to work this month. We're going to do it the next month. So I would say shoot for 10 and assume that it will probably take 12.
Well, I thank you both very much for your presentation tonight. And, uh, yeah, it was very interesting. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for having us.
All right. We have one final item on the work session this evening, and that is a discussion regarding granular pavement subbase. Where we're starting on this one, Forrest, please.
So push the button. All right. Uh, so, uh, there has been a history with this subject. In 2021. The, uh, we got together with public works and, uh, staff and looked at SUDAS. SUDAS is the state urban design standard that the city of Huxley follows. And we looked at creating exceptions to that changes to that document in 2021. And the discussion at that time was granular. Uh, subbase underneath the pavements that we, uh, put in, that we require developers to put in. And in the decision at that time in 2021 was. Let's require that for our major streets. Let's require that for our collectors and our arterials, but our local streets. Um, as with the rest of the Des Moines metro area, except for Clive, I think. Uh, except for Clive, they have their pavement and they put it on compacted subgrade with dirt, basically the dirt that's there. They compact 12 inches of that dirt, uh, have moisture control, compaction control, and then they put the concrete right on top of it. The granular subbase extends the life of the pavement. You put the granular base underneath the concrete. You put sub drains in with it, gets that water away from the pavement. You don't have the freeze thaw. And your pavement lasts from an estimated 35 years to 50 years. So it really extends the, the life of the pavement. However, there's a cost for that. And, uh, in 2024, we revisited this again with the council. And the, we did an analysis and that's in your packets. from the analysis we did in April of 2024. And again, showed that increase in lifespan from 35 years to 50 years. But we showed that it adds about $5,000 per lot. We were using what the impact on Westview Heights. It's just now getting completed. And we invited the developers and they asked, they talked about those costs as well. And they might've thrown out somewhere numbers a little bit higher than five, but round numbers around 5,000, uh, per lot. And so we want to visit this again with the council to see if there's interest in exploring this again. With putting that granular base and putting those sub drains underneath because the developers paying for the cost for putting in the streets now. But when they have to be removed and replaced or repaired, you know, then that cost is all on the city to do. So that's been the debate. As an engineer, I'm in favor of putting that granular base underneath there in favor of the sub drains. I know that Matt and Jeff are really in favor of that as well, just because of the less maintenance and the, the costs down the road.
Just for example of where we have it, where we don't have it and the reasoning behind it. Right by the vision bank out here, going up the hill, you see the water coming through the cracks and it's destroying the road. I mean, we're putting out whole patch all the way along there because it's breaking it apart, freezing it fine. You go out to Sand Cherry. Um, you go, uh, down Sand Cherry, which has became a, our arterial road. Um, and it has water pushing up through all the cracks and even the driveways and stuff like that. So with water not, and, and it's that's 20 years old roughly, and it is in terrible, terrible shape. Um, and we've been patching it as, as we can, um, and as, as needed, but it, I think that where we sit now and growth and where something that's similar going to be going as Sand Cherry in the same soil across for the future. Um, I think it's going to be very important that we get it put in there to make our, our concrete last. I mean, it's huge cost. Maybe, but just, yeah, you're going to see the water come up here. Yep.
Yeah. And this time of year is just awful on pavements because of that. Warms that thaw, warms up in the, during the day and the moisture comes up to the pavement and then at night it freezes and, and expands in the joints and you start seeing that breakup.
And to try to cold patch that with the water pushing from the bottom, it just pushes it out. So then you're continuing continuously fixing it.
So really tonight it's questions, uh, that the council might have. Is this something you want to explore further, you know?
So what is our surrounding county or surrounding communities doing?
They, they're putting it on concrete, on the compacted.
On arterials and local.
No, just on local streets. Yes, same thing we're doing.
So we're asking for everything though, right?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, that'd be, that'd be ideal.
So in, in Westview Heights, for example, the new subdivision Centennial, the east west row there at the north end, that will have the granular base underneath it with the sub drains. But all the other roads in Westview are concrete on compacted subgrade.
So we did get some controversy with the contractors coming up saying that they won't be able to build in Huxley because of this. So what's your answer to them?
I think they're making the money.
I, I agree with you totally, but that, that's, that's going to be the issue that we're looking at because we are going to be one community that's doing an entire community and not just the arterials.
Yep.
So what, how are we going to say we're going to be different than anybody else?
I also think that if they're making the money, they're going to come here and if we're charging them the extra 5,000 to do it, I think they're still going to come here because there's still the demand for the housing. I, I don't think it's going to deter them.
So i- it's an interesting comment. They're, they're making the money, but what do you suppose the average net margin is on a single family home?
I couldn't tell you.
I mean, if we're all believing that, hey, they're just making this money. Um, you can look at national builders because they're publicly traded and you can see their net margins. Uh, their net margins are, are under 10%. So say 8%. So on a $300,000 home, their net margin might be $24,000. So if we're going to add five, like that developer is saying six, 7,000. I mean, you're, you're cutting their margins by 25%. That's a significant uh, deterrent from wanting to develop. If we're going to cut their margins by 25%, they can go to Ankeny, Grimes, Waukees, Altoona. Um, and make 25% more money. It seems likely that they would do that. That's, that's my concern.
My concern is Ankeny moving towards us, right? What does Ankeny do? Do they do?
They do. Saying that we're doing that.
So I mean, like they're coming this way, right? They're I would hate to lose.
So right, so right now we're not, we're basically doing TIF for industrial and, uh, growth. So if we went back to commercial growth also, I mean, could we? Is that something we, we're looking at? We could work with them?
I'm sorry. So commercial, and, and, and I don't get to vote on this, of course, but commercially, I, I think it might make more sense because you're going to have heavy traffic. Um, and a commercial type development, um, as opposed to a residential. Now, maybe that's, maybe that's already worked in the classification of the streets. I don't know.
It is. So for Anthem, for example, we have rock under those streets.
Okay.
It, and also with that, um, you know, speaking of TIF, if we're tipping for, for the streets, uh, I mean, well, let's TIF a little bit more to get a better product, maybe. Kind of maybe, uh, to help or split that cost.
Uh, based on the estimate here, I was kind of curious because I didn't see unless I'm missing any of the builders out there. Um, I think what Steve and someone from Jensen was here last time. I'd be curious what they think of the number. I actually like the idea from the longevity standpoint. Um, and if Westview was 5,000, I bought a house out there. I'm just thinking over a 30-year loan that equates to passing on 200 bucks a year to the person who purchases the home, you know, not in, not accounting for the interest. So my guess is the builder's just passing the cost on. If it cost them an extra 5,000 a lot. So I, I personally would be in favor of this. I, I think that we all know we're part of the prairie and I think sub drainage has been a continued topic. So um, I'm not a concrete expert. I'll pass it to the guy who is, but I believe sub drainage is always going to be favorable.
Yeah, if I just follow up on one comment of, uh, you mentioned it, but you're not the first. It's, hey, this is just going to get passed along to the homeowner and, and, you know, you amortize that over 30 years. It's really not that big a deal. In increase in, in, in the input cost of a house doesn't necessarily get uh, realized in the sale price. The house is going to sell at the market rate. So whether we do something to decrease the cost of construction or increase the cost of construction, the house is going to sell at the market rate. What's getting adjusted ultimately is the developer, the builder's profit margin. Um, and who's to say what the appropriate profit mar- profit margin is? That's not for me to say, but um, it's not necessarily the homeowner that, that borers this cost. Um, it's the attractiveness of your community for future developers. So uh, with that, Greg?
I'd just like to say that I don't think it was the home builders that put me on the city council. It was the citizens of Huxley. And, uh, from my perspective, I want to do what's best for the citizens of Huxley. And if that means that we can extend roads out longer period of time, it means that tax dollars going to roads go down. Uh, we're spending less money there. I, I think it's only makes sense to invest in what's needed there. I'm not a real big fan of worrying about what others are doing. My philosophy in life is you lead, you follow, or you get the heck out of the way. Um, so really I don't care what other people are doing. I care what Huxley's doing. And I'd be all in favor of putting the subbase in, get the water out from underneath there and extend these roads out longer.
To, to go on, uh, what you were saying about, okay, it, it's market value now, but um, you know, if you got a street that looks like Sand Cherry, that's all busted up, what's the curb appeal there? And, and the right ability on that pavement on a 20-year-old house versus, you know, something that would be a 50-year pavement. It, it would be maybe, uh, sell better.
I like rock under rose.
I'm not disputing the science. I just think anybody's disputing the science.
I, I go a short or long version of that, but I think everyone knows, uh, uh, where I stand with that, the engineer in me and, um, likes to look at the life of the pavement and it, it's been proven. It, it, it links into the life of the pavement, which reduces the city's long-term cost. And the developer pays for the facility with whether stiff or not to have help to, to be started. And then as soon as they turn that over to the city, it's the cities to maintain for the rest of the life of that road. And if that lowers the costs for the citizens of Huxley, I think, and lowers maintenance and, and they lengthen the life of the road. I think that's something we need to take into consideration really hard. We can hear developers talk about it. I've talked to Clive directly and they said, there's developers said the same thing. They're not going to build there. They're not going to do this and they implemented this across their, their system. And they still built and they're still growing and they're still doing. So, um, we find there's a way and there's a way to move forward. So I would be in favor of moving forward for the, the longevity and length of the increase in life of the pavement. Water ruins that pavement when it just sits there, lowers the maintenance cost. And there's just a small upfront fee that we need to discuss ahead of time. And, uh, I'm not saying we have to pay for it as a city, but it might be worth the investment to do that. If we can get 15 more years of that pavement and lower maintenance costs, that, that seems like a good investment. So.
Only thing I'll add is if we're going to go with that direction, we don't do a mid-development. We're becoming surprised. Now we want this from you. We need to do that before we have a developer mid-build.
Yep.
I think that's why we're having the discussion now is we really don't have any new stuff going right now that.
That's correct. I mean, there's discussion about potentially something happening somewhere, but there's nothing mid-build right now.
So I support what maintenance and public works and, and, uh, those guys' wishes too. So they're great input to have as they take care of our system that we have.
I would just couns- ask council, you know, next step, is it something where you want to get, uh, some developers to comment on it? Do you want this to be an agenda item? It would be an agenda item. Uh, amending the SUDAS supplemental specs is what you would be doing, taking an action item on. Um, be taking an action item on so we could, you know, present that to council for consideration or you want to think about it some more, uh, just kind of looking for direction from council.
I would defer to, you know, Dave and others. I, I think, you know, whether it needs to go through planning and zoning and their comment period and, and feedback for developers, or if we want to do it here in a special session or I guess I, I'm not, not sure what the next procedural step is, but these guys are more familiar with that.
I, I, I would certainly support input from stakeholders. Um, I, I don't think that's ever a bad thing. So, um, if we've got a, uh, if we, if that works within our timeline, our timeframe, I would certainly encourage council to, uh, consider going that route.
I, I would have no problem listening to stakeholders. I think tonight would have been a prime opportunity to listen to people where it's on the work session. And was clearly published out there that if people were that concerned, that maybe some of them could have showed up. But I'm not, it's not something that we, that we have to move forward next week on or two weeks. If we want to have a time to have people come in, I'm, I'm more than happy to listen to people.
So, so maybe work with Dave to set up a time for get stakeholders to see what they have to say.
I would say, you know, if we're, if we're going to bring it back in a couple of weeks or thereafter, we just set a, uh, just a discussion item on the open agenda rather than making it part of the work session and allow those folks to come in and speak during our regular meeting and allow council to hear that input. And then from there, then councilmen decide what direction they really want to take going forward after that.
Perfect. Uh, that sounds great. Like that's, uh, appears to be agreeable to everybody. So thank you very much. All right. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second by Mr. Mulder. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for March 11th at 6:00 PM. With that, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please respond with aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Have a great night.